Explaining some of the things that are going on this year. Another one of our petitions, our resolutions was to put printers and computers in common areas of life residence halls to print after hours when the computer lot is closed. Another one was to put the feminine hygiene products in the main bathroom at campus because right now there are none and our campus is sixty percent female, over sixty percent.
As far as this year, we're really kind of, we've only just begun really. We have a lot going on and that sounds weird considering we're in November, but when there's, there's not a lot of people in Parliament still and they're all very new, so they're still developing their ideas. We did have one for an ASL interpreter which we're working on disability services policy and that's something that Rob actually brought to us and it actually shed some light on things that we need to take care of as far as our own policies are concerned. Feminine hygiene products was passed this same day and it's more an issue of cost. Right now we're working on a bus shelter, a bus shuttle project for the college.
I get some information on that.
We do too, we were at the Ripta meeting, so we were gonna talk about it right now.
The shelter, not the shuttle?
No, the shuttle bus tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, what's gonna happen starting tomorrow, tomorrow and Tuesday are gonna be trial periods and it's going to officially launch on Wednesday. But Ripta is providing us a shuttle system to go around campus. It'll be like fifteen minute intervals, I'm assuming at nine stops. Some stops will only be drop offs and some will be both pickups and drop offs depending on the flow of traffic, so that's what tomorrow and Tuesday are for, is to see what kind of traffic flow we have. One stop is-
Is that as definite?
Yes, going to an effect tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, my dad works for it and everything would feel complicated and that.
Nope, it's definite as of tomorrow. Yes, Rob?
It's not Tuesday.
No, they're gonna run it on Tuesday, I was told.
Oh, they're gonna run it?
Yeah.
Even though there's no classes?
No.
Does it cost any money?
Um, not to us, not to student government, no.
Okay, to the writers?
Actually, the administration got one of those time sensitive grants, so we have to, you know, initiate the program before the grant runs out.
Not to the writers, yeah.
What time does it start and what time does it end during the day?
I believe eight AM.
I think it goes eight AM to nine PM depending on the locations.
Yep, and between certain hours, there will be, I think at peak times there will be nine stops and after a certain time they'll just, they'll feel limited a little bit.
One of, some of the stops on campus include the social work building, the rec center, new hall, between new hall and Brown.
And Brown, it's actually gonna come into the new hall loop and do a loop around Brown and go back out.
Um, we also have one between the Murray Center and physical plant, so all the central parking lots that are over there, students can be, that'll be a drop off location.
That'll be a drop off.
There will be, um, one at JP out of the library.
Yep, behind the library and the softball field.
And then, there will be one by Roberts Hall and one in A Lot.
Is there a map of this?
This will be posted somewhere.
Probably by tomorrow, it'll be posted somewhere online. I have a map, it's in my dorm room.
But it's, it starts in A Lot and goes around the campus, or it starts at Roberts and then goes to A Lot, goes to the Sherlock's, not the Sherlock Center.
Social work building.
Social work building.
Do the work, do the band drop off there?
I know that they do, I think, I know that they're definitely doing.
The social work building, yeah, I think so.
I'm very.
Their concern with the social work building was that, um, there was actually a specific concern. Uh, at nighttime, the people walking back to their cars wherever they parked and I guess it's not very well lit or campus police is not really around very much.
No, I- I'm absolutely not.
So, yeah, so one of the concerns was actually voiced by your department and you will have the shuttle stop now. So wherever you parked your car, you can get a shuttle ride.
And there will be signs stating where the shuttle stop is. We're in the process of getting those made, so it's just in the works.
That'd be cool.
So, those are some of the things that we're working on this year. Um, is there, there's, I know that there's some people in the room that have specific concerns, so I'm gonna shout out to you right now
Yeah.
because you came in here with a mission, so I'd like to have it.
My name is Laura, right?
My name is Laura Howard, I live in Suite H.
Okay.
Um, this is something that literally every single person I have talked to has had a problem with. Everyone, there has not been one person, including people, like everyone who lives there has a problem with this. It's the suite trash bins that got eliminated, I don't know why, for what reason, but last year, I know, living last year on campus, we were allowed to bring our trash into the suite and, I don't know, like the maintenance workers would just take it out themselves, we would not have to go to the dumpster ourselves and take our trash out. This year, there are no trash bins in the suite and we have been told over and over again that we're not allowed to even bring our own trash bins and bins into the suite. And every reason that I've heard out of every, you know, RA or hall director has been, "Well, it makes the suite look cluttered and it makes this look, it's gonna make everything unsanitary" and blah blah blah. Well, now it's in our rooms and we have to come back to our rooms every day and deal with the smell.
Do other residence halls have trash bins in their suites or is it just?
It's not just this hall, new hall does not, new hall has them.
New hall has them.
No, you don't let her.
Yeah, new hall has them.
We have trash bins that we have to empty ourselves.
Or Paul doesn't have them.
I have signatures from people in new hall.
Yeah, why don't we let her finish what she's saying first and then we'll ask her questions.
Um, so yeah, this is just a list of names that I got literally within probably about twenty minutes, I got this many names and-
Do you mind if I take that?
You can, sure.
Thank you.
And, um, quite honestly, I know that this isn't your fault and I know you guys, you know, have no control over it, but I pay a lot of money to go here and I know that what I'm saying right now, almost literally every single person that I've talked to feels the same way. I pay a lot of money to go here, I don't wanna be having, going out in the winter, taking my own trash out to the bin, it's ridiculous, I'm sorry, but it's ludicrous. And, um, every time I've talked to somebody about it, it's been, "Don't bother because it's not gonna happen, don't bother because nobody's gonna listen to you, nobody's gonna try to change it" and it, nothing has happened.
Now I have a question for you and maybe the RAs in the room can jump in for me if they can. Now, this means you also can't have your own small personal trash container, yes?
I don't know if you can, but I do.
In my, our room, we have it.
In your, your own personal rooms, you can't have your own small trash container?
Yeah.
But not in the common area? I just wanna clarify, just so I know that for sure.
And there are trash cans in the bathroom as well.
There are trash cans in the bathroom.
There's a small trash can by the bathroom.
Not only that, but it's bringing up an issue with, I know for you guys especially, you guys who are RAs, um, now it's, people are getting written up, people are getting fined for trash that is not their own problem. I know for a fact Sweet D, you can go in there and check right now, there is a huge pile of trash where the recycling bins are and just because people are too lazy to bring up, nobody's listening to their own ways. People are just throwing their trash in the middle of the suite and people are getting fined for it, people are getting written up and, I mean, I don't know, but you guys probably don't wanna write people up just for trash, like it's trash. And, um, I don't know, it's just, it's something that I think is ridiculous.
Yeah, no, um, I live in Suite A and they throw in their trash in the recycling bins all the time. I'm also a tour guide here on campus, so whenever I showcase my suite, eh, I lose people just on the conditions of the room.
It's gross.
Because last year when I did tours, we had trash bins in our rooms and it would, it wasn't a problem whether the, the cleaning service would come, I'd take it out, or we'd take it out by ourselves. As long as it was contained in that area, people can see that we are a cleanly located location. But now I have had a lot of comments and I've had that mentioned at all, uh, for no trash bins in our suite, it's been ridiculous.
And it's literally like those two trash bins right there, the green and the blue, they are overflowing with trash. I don't know how many suites, I walked around today to, you know, look at, look at the list, every single suite that there possibly can be and there is trash in most of them.
And so you'd want something like that gray bin there?
I just want it back to what it used to be, I don't under, I just, I mean, there were two of those trash bins in every suite and it's just ridiculous and I don't wanna have to deal with it. And for people to get fined for other people's trash, my friend, sorry, my friend is, my friend is getting fined because other people are too lazy and don't bring out their own trash.
That's okay, take us along.
And it's ridiculous.
Okay, Nick, you were, you first.
Go ahead, I, I have the solution, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I think that, that we should at least have a bin to have to take it out ourselves. I understand it's not maintenance's responsibility, um, to take out our own trash, they clean our bathrooms, they do all that, but like even if we just had a, a normal sized trash box, then-
So something like that gray one?
And we take it out.
That's what they're, I love to wander myself, I get up first.
Okay, um, go ahead.
So it's also me, like, you know, you, you brought this up with RAs, you brought this up with hall directors and you're kinda getting, well, it's not, it's not gonna change or stop talking about it.
Yeah.
Have you talked to Theresa Brown?
I don't know who to talk to, I have not been told anybody to talk to at all.
Well, this is the next step, come into student government, then what student government can do is, student government officers can go to Theresa Brown and say, "All right, why is this the case? Why was it changed, was it really necessary to change it? And if it's, if in other residence halls it's allowed, why can't it be allowed in Weber?" And I, I think at that point, it could be solved right there, talking to Theresa Brown. Say that student government officers then walk out of that office and don't have a resolution. Well, the next step is simple, Parliament can pass a resolution and most likely pass it unanimously. That carries a lot of weight, that carries the weight of the student body. And that resolution doesn't go to Theresa, that resolution goes to her boss, Dr. Gary Penfield, who sits in student government and would also adhere to this concern. And then that carries more weight and, and it's quite possible that the decision can be, can be reversed because, you know, you've got a petition, this is the residence building. You know, you pay to live here, this, this is your home and you should be able to, to live here the way you wanna live here and if it's, you know, you have to go outside in the rain and, and in the snow in the winter to empty a small little gray bin that might be in, in your, in your room, that's ridiculous. There should be a common trash area. Ben, I think you, you've made a case for it here tonight and I think what student government can do next is look into the issue with Theresa and if there's no, if it's not addressed there, can probably take it to the next level. But ultimately, I mean, just talk to your student government leaders and, and make sure they follow through with it.
I mean, this has even motivated you to become part of student government. So I think that if you're, if, this is something that's really passionate for you and I, I understand where you want to go with this and I think that we, as Nick said, these are the, those are our steps that we're going to take, 'cause he literally said my exact kind of thought. I don't foresee it being an issue making this happen again, but there has to be a reason why it was changed and we do need to find the background as to why it was changed because it can't just be the way it looks.
I keep hearing health issues, but quite honestly, it's creating more health issues having them in our own rooms than it is having them in the suite. More issues for ants, which I know something personally about. I was in Willard last year and I was there the day that there were handfuls of ants crawling out of the ceiling.
Okay, that, I-
If you remember that shit, but no, like, it's, uh, no, it's causing more health issues.
Okay.
And I don't wanna have to run into my room and have to spray Febreeze every time I go in there just because it smells, because of our own little trash bins, because we're not allowed to have trash bins in the suite.
That works for me, I understand. Um, I think that we can definitely bring this back to Theresa and it won't be an issue to have this discussion. Does anybody else have something that they wanna talk about? Go ahead.
Who's brought to my attention that, uh, on the east side of campus, that little cafe, they used to accept meals so the people could get meals and apparently they stopped that without warning anybody.
Yep.
And there's a lot of people that, they don't have the time, whether they work there or between class, to run all the way to DDC and so they can get their lunch and run back. Maybe you can find out why and maybe get it reactivated so they can get their meals at their little cafe there.
I was under the impression that Donovan Neil Flynn was being accepted at both cafes.
No.
But, well, I'm saying that's the impression that was given, um, but we can look into it and see why it hasn't been done.
Yeah, it was actually only at that cafe.
It's only at that cafe?
Yes, 'cause, uh, I also, I work at the admissions office every lunch period and, and, um, it used to, last year when I was here as a freshman, it used to be that I could just go to the Gala Cafe, get my lunch and go right back where to admissions. And then without warning, like Rob said, they just changed it to where I have to either use bonus points or I have to walk to Donovan. And since it takes time to walk to Donovan and the lunch rush is there, it also takes time for me to get my meal and then takes time to walk back, that's too much time war for the, my allotted half hour lunch break that I have to get docked pay just for eating lunch, which I feel is ridiculous because this is all Donovan and it's all the same food. So I feel it shouldn't really matter that much how we pay for it if it's all owned by the same location.
Do you know when it changed by chance?
About two weeks into the semester.
Two weeks into this semester?
I remember it was a Thursday morning, two weeks into the semester.
Some mid spring, mid, mid September, sorry.
Yeah.
Wrong password. Um, so we can definitely take that to Mr. Fleming, Mr. Alfrin, my friends. All right, let's go ahead, let's bring more. Anybody? Okay.
I hope that's all you.
Faculty staff new parking system. Particularly in parking lot C, which was once an open lot, it is now a faculty staff lot and as we all know, it is left about vacant, half vacant throughout most of the day. Will that ever be going back to an open lot again?
Yeah, um, actually, we spoke to Vice President Gerhardt about that and I actually, it was at our, one of our luncheons that we have with them and I sat right next to him and I said, you know, "What do we get about lot C?" And he's like, "Oh, you know, we'll probably just let students use it." So, I'll email him again, but that's what he said to me in person, Jordan was there.
Um, we're doing-
He noticed, he noticed that, you know, that it wasn't filled up by faculty and he kinda started wondering in the middle of semester why it wasn't, but never really thought to contact anybody.
Because they have D and E right next door, that's-
Yeah, so.
The day they do that, I'll go out to the hammer and knock down the faculty sign, let me know.
Okay, so for those of you who don't know where parking lot C is, there is Whipple, which is the communications building, and then there's Alder and then there's Foreman, please stop and down. Um, then there's, so it's Whipple, parking lot, street, Alder Hall, art center, Foreman Center, Stapansley. It's that little square parking lot, which was originally made because student government needed more student parking. Shush. Um, and there, there is a reason why we've been looking into changing it and we noticed from the very beginning that it wasn't always full all the time. Our deputy speaker, who can't be here tonight, is supposed to be working on a parking, some sort of parking reservation.
Yeah, his, well, his idea, well, he was direct to sit with his committee at least a couple hours during the day, weekdays and kinda count the cars as they came in and what kind of peak times they were and what times that the spots were empty, so he's supposed to do that.
So, we already kinda have a, uh, project, like a study being done.
A task force.
Um, but I believe that something's being put on the agenda for Wednesday, you know?
Yeah, actually, yeah, he is.
Yeah, there is an, an agenda item for this Wednesday to talk about changing that parking lot over, but I don't know about you guys, but as residents, how do you feel about being in a resident only parking lot?
I think it's, honestly, I think the parking situation is really stupid.
Good.
Yeah, until, because I think my class is at Soul Church Building. I'm sorry, because I'm not gonna walk from at ten o'clock, nine o'clock at night when there's no campus PD, from one side of campus to the other and it's like, I do take my car there and I know I'm gonna get-
Well, you can, you can park in whatever lot you want after five PM.
No, you can't.
Is it after five PM?
No.
It's only, it's only-
That's what says every single-
Residents are only allowed to park.
By the rec center?
Five, no, after five PM.
Back, back here.
I have classes starting at two.
Okay.
And it's Soul Church Building until nine o'clock at night.
So now reading, stated, now, this is a secondary question based off of what you've stated. For you, the shuttle system directly benefits your current situation, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm gonna-
The end of the dialogue.
I don't know necessarily when it ends, that was the ballpark, I can't guarantee that, please don't quote-
Well, that's why they're gonna try it tomorrow.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't quote me on the times that I gave for the shuttle, but I'm just making sure, like, if that was, would you consider that a solution for your problem?
It's a little toys.
If they-
Class can get done, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I feel like I have lots of answers.
Just something about the shuttle.
Go ahead.
Um, I only heard about it 'cause of where I work, but no, I don't know if any residents know about it, so how are you gonna do a trial period for first duties if no one has any idea of what it is or where the stops are and what's going on?
That we know.
Okay.
And we told the Vice President of Student Affairs, Dr. Gary Penfield, about that on Thursday when we had our meeting with him, that it wasn't well publicized and that we thought that if they didn't test run without publicizing it, it would fail. We'll see where that gets us.
I think, I think the trial run, um, I was on the Parking and Traffic Committee for six years. I, I think the, um, the trial run is more so, so they can judge the traffic patterns and the location of the stops based on traffic, make sure they're not backing up traffic while the bus is stopping. So even if it's not being utilized, it's more for them to judge where the shuttle's going and, you know, if it can get through certain areas at certain times.
Because they're doing this no matter what.
Yeah, that I know, yeah.
Over there, lots of D and E at two o'clock and four o'clock, all the commuters leaving and that, those lots are jammed, the shuttle could be stuck in that. So I think they're trying to figure out how they're gonna drive the shuttle around.
And there are eighteen seated positions in this shuttle, two handicapped, sixteen seated for everyone else and group for twenty-four total standing.
Room for twelve standing. Handicapped, will you wheelchair access?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's two spots where they can lock the wheelchair. And it's supposed to be ADAs by drivers, so they know how to properly, uh, secure the wheelchairs.
Ripta, I don't, for to work for it, you don't have to ADAs it, right?
No, no, no.
The driver does, eh-
The driver's driver. That comes here?
Yes, it's a special, it's a special company that we hired.
Oh, but they're through Ripta.
Through Ripta, yeah.
Oh, 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 oh.
We're working with Ripta.
The driver of Ripta, the driver is outsourced.
Oh, hi. I thought.
It, we met with the company that's providing the shuttle and they're also providing the driver, is the impression I'm under?
They're providing the drivers and they're gonna, um, what, like in off hours, they're gonna park the shuttle in the Brown parking lot and they're gonna come fill it with gas anytime it needs gas, so they're taking care of literally everything, um, yeah, it's in a big.
So what I was gonna say about the, um, the parking situation, it's come up in our say a lot in terms of resident concerns and one of the biggest concerns is what you've been expressing in terms of, "Well, if I have a class after nine, you know, I don't feel safe walking back." And I think the shuttle service is a great start for that, but you can always, always just call campus police if you don't feel safe about it. And the thing is, is that you live on campus and I'm, I'm a firm believer that the residents should be parking back there and walking everywhere on campus, that's just my opinion. Granted, I don't have a car, but I, I would like to, I used to have a car and I would drive to the student union all the time just to go to dawn, but it takes away from a valuable spot from not only a resident, but someone who is visiting the college or anything like that. And we're, it's also free, like, people need to stop complaining, it's free, you don't have to register for cars.
Now, can somebody please tell me why people don't feel safe walking through the campus other than the un, the not well lit areas? Because I know that is a major concern and-
That's the only reason.
That's the only reason?
I don't feel safe.
Major.
And some people, like I know from being RA, some people's concerns are they've pushed the blue buttons before and it takes campus police so long to respond that that makes them feel so uncomfortable, they feel like, okay, those options are there, but they're not being utilized the way they should and that's what makes them feel unsafe.
So they feel that there needs to be a quicker response time to the sa, the blue safety lights? All right, that's something that we can take back, um, and-
I feel like they've enough of them.
Yeah, but if they don't work, then there's no point.
Yeah.
If they don't work and they're not getting there on time, then no one's gonna wanna use it in the first place.
All right, I'm gonna point to people and then I'm gonna go.
I just have a comment on what we just said.
Go ahead.
As far as East Campus, I know it's not right next to the, all the buildings in East Campus, like Building Seven, Social Work Building, but parking lot A, it is considered open parking, so campus police won't ticket there no matter what kind of hang tag, what kind of sticker you have?
No.
No.
Residents, we can't park there.
Okay, it's, it's-
Residents can, if you have a resident sticker, you can park there.
A Lot is open parking for anyone.
But that open parking does not mean residents.
Yeah.
Residents are only allowed to park there like at least three times.
Anybody but residents.
You just haven't-
Campus police does not ticket that lot, though.
It does. But according to campus police, it's-
Well, that, that has-
They will take it.
They said that?
Yes.
They will take it.
Only, according to campus police, it's only for commuters and faculty.
Correct.
The only time residents are allowed to park somewhere else-
It's assuming that people have gas, like people that don't belong on campus can park.
It's after five PM.
Yes.
Right, guests can park in a lot.
Guests get temporary gases.
Yeah.
We need clar, so if everybody could clear, uh, say whether or not they agree with this following statement would be appreciated. We need clarification on when there is open parking and what lots are open parking in, what lots residents are allowed to park in and which ones they're not allowed to park in and what times of the day ticketing is happening for open parking lots for those, if, if resident students aren't allowed to park in them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that those three statements were correct and then-
Yeah, I, I sent an email to Chief DO in May with all those questions and here we have actually.
He's been waiting to see how the parking system is working and since we've only had one full month of it actually being enforced, which I don't know how accurate it is being enforced considering I'm parked in a resident lot right now, um, if I have a ticket out there, I'll let you know.
But definitely off of that, when it comes to the faculty staff lots, whether or not you can park in them after five or not at all, it was the case before the student plan went to effect that every faculty staff lot opened up to everybody at two thirty and the council, two years ago, which is the faculty government body, had a resolution brought to it to extend all those times from two thirty to five and that was voted down by faculty to extend their own time so far. So, obviously the students don't want all those slots to be at five or not parked at all. So, we definitely need to get clarification on whether or not students can park in faculty lots after five o'clock, because most of the faculty lots are closer to buildings, um, especially on East Campus, but also if it's five o'clock, well, we should really put it back at two thirty because both student government and the faculty have been on record in the past saying two thirty is the appropriate time. Faculty aren't here at two thirty, unless they're an adjunct, you know, the, the full-time faculty, they should be here at two thirty, they should have a parking spot already.
Okay.
And after a certain time, those spots really need to open up to commuters so they can get closer to the building for the night classes, because they stock at four o'clock, stock at four thirty.
All right, so I'm gonna bring it over to Rob, then I'm gonna bring it back to Tim, 'cause you had, okay, go ahead.
A lot of the residents in New Hall, as you know, are nurses or social work and they have to travel there. But one of their major concerns also is during the weather, inclement weather. If they have to walk that long, even during the daytime, we have snow, heavy rains.
All right, so this is partially concerned about snow removal?
No, no, you were asking reasons.
Uh, please clarify. Oh, okay, sorry, okay, thank you, I was just making sure that that was-
I know, it was just-
We get so far off topic?
Yeah.
Thank you, all right, hold on. It, does it directly relate to what Rob has to say?
About snow removal?
We will get there. Tim?
Um, I'd like to talk about campus police, so I don't know if you wanna do that now or if you wanna-
Okay.
I'd hold hand.
We're gonna go to snow removal, campus police?
Mind related parking.
Parking!
Um, just about like why I would prefer to be able to park in open lots, I'm an education major. I'm off campus this semester for four of my classes because I teach for four of them. So when I come back, the way the practitioners work, or just because of problems traffic, coming back, I end up being late for three of my classes every single week because I have to park here and then walk all the way to my class.
Okay.
So it isn't, not like, just if some of the open lots were available, it would-
Like the gray lots?
Yeah, that would-
That, but that would even benefit me.
Right.
Okay. Snow removal.
They, I, I've broken, I've moved, I've broken my foot many of times living on campus and campus police, I've called, had to pick me up, it's taken like ten minutes to get there and I'm two minutes away because I can't walk on sidewalks in the street. They've not done, like I, you know, I'm on crutches and like, there's ice and I understand they can't do it all on campus, but there, there has to be a path, we shouldn't be having anybody in crutches. And walking in a wheelchair, we have a high, um, spe, um, community of spec, like, um, disabilities, we have special needs and all forms of disabilities and if they're gonna have to try to see where the sidewalks are and like going to the student union, you can't even tell half the time where the grass is going down the slope and where the sidewalk is and it's gonna cause more injuries for everyone.
So, more, better snow removal on sidewalks and pathways?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, I agree with that. All right, campus police.
Um, so as an RA, obviously, and my other RAs have contested this, that we deal with campus police on a very frequent basis within the residence halls, whether that's due to alcohol violations, anything in terms of that, if we need them, we can call them. It's great that they are located in Brown Hall because essentially they can be here within two minutes regardless of where they are. Um, but I've also noticed that campus police tend to gingerly get their cars to drive over to New Hall when they could easily just walk there. Or if there's an emergency in suite like I had two weeks ago and I needed someone right away, it took them about ten minutes to get there. Now, they pride themselves on being able to have a quote-unquote "two-minute response time", which is what Lieutenant Wilson has repeatedly said.
You guys wanna take a seat up front, you're more than welcome to join, so you don't have to sit back on the radiator? Okay, we won't put you on the spot ever again.
There's food and drinks over there, too.
All right, go ahead, Tim.
Um, and Lieutenant Wilson has said that, you know, "We have a two-minute response time, if you need anything, please call us because we can be there anywhere on campus within two minutes." Um, from what I've heard from just two people here today, they've called campus police twice and apparently their new response time is now ten minutes. Um, so I think it is our, well, I think it would be the duty of student community government to challenge campus police's, um, I guess, what's that word I'm looking for?
Quality.
Response time?
Yeah, response time. Um, and it's, and it's not, it's, it's not just their response time, it's, it's, it's their attitude towards students in general that I have a big issue with.
Do you feel like it's hard that they are disrespectful with students, that they are unhelpful with students, I need more specifics.
In terms of, it depends on who you are, because for me as an RA, they're gonna, they're obviously going to respect me because I have a position on the resident side of campus, they deal with me a lot. But when it comes to normal residents, they really, they don't know how to talk to residents properly. And that's why I was so upset when we got rid of the third shift person that dealt with just resident students. Like, there's no reason, I have, I have no idea why, that we don't have someone on that shift. There's nothing else going on across campus except the life that lives on this side of campus during that time, so, yeah.
I feel like they're training to be better, um, certain situations have happened, I've searched, when they have the search room, it takes them two searches before they can find something, if they're doing it correctly the first time, stuff should have been found. And like, they're trying to get, like you were saying, I, we've had situations that are sweet connected to us and by the time, 'cause of the smell that comes from their suite, by the time they get to us, there's nothing anyone to do. It's all, it's done, nothing can be done.
And it's enough with school?
Yeah, and we would have like, we would be here, we would be there.
Okay, so, Arlie, go ahead.
Um, just to go with exactly what Tim said, I've had multiple times I've had to call things that aren't just alcohol related, things that are both medical and other things, where it does, someone's life is potentially in serious harm and it takes them so long to get there that, and it's really upsetting when the hall director who is farther away from them gets here first and I still have to wait ten to fifteen minutes for them to get here, even during the day, like not just at night, um, even during the day when we have to make calls, it still takes them extremely long period of time.
Okay.
I'm just saying, as a resident, you know, we're always told, "Call campus police first, call campus police first," but if I am ever in emergency and if I ever was, I would not call campus police first at all, ever. I would call the police first 'cause I don't trust the campus police to get there on time or to take it as seriously. I would call the police first because I don't trust the campus police to get there on time or to take it as seriously as like a real police officer would.
As a point of information for you, um, if you called nine-one-one and you were directed to the Providence Police, they would call our campus police and have them come first. And then they would send a driver out from Providence Police as well, my mother works for the police department, that's how I know. Um, what they do is they communicate, so this is what I've been told. You call nine-one-one, there's an emergency at Rhode Island College, our campus police officers are contacted and see who's gonna be the first responder. They're expected to be on location before the Providence camp- the Providence Police show up.
But they will show up.
But they will show up, they will come, no, don't get me wrong, they will come. But they do contact Rhode Island College campus police officers before they make contact with our campus in the first place.
Well, that might be better to begin with because then maybe they'll take it more seriously because they're really like, no, I'm calling the police officer first, you know what I mean?
Okay. Somebody else had a hand up before you did, uh, did you have anything? Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Regarding campus police, uh, a couple of things I noticed, when we do our fire drills, campus police is out there monitored, especially the road near New Hall, cause cars fly through, as everybody knows. When we had an actual fire there, they never stood there to watch the traffic as people were crossing. They were there, they walked across there, they went inside, came back out, went back inside their office, stayed there. And there was a few people that almost got hit, cause cars zooming through.
Were RAs out there with you guys?
Yes, the RAs were out there, but the RAs really can't stop the traffic.
No, I didn't, I figured that they could, I was just saying that I, I wish an RA would've said something about someone almost being hit by a car.
We're gonna go to Tim and Nick after Rob's.
Yeah, but they were telling the people to push.
Here's the thing, I was at, I was at the place, it was three A M, it was a fire alarm. Obviously residents are really upset that they're out there, so they were sitting on the curb. We told them multiple times, but if they wanna get hit by a car, they're gonna get hit by a car, that's just the fact of the matter. That was their own choice to sit there, we told them and instructed them many times. But the thing is, you have to realize that it was four RAs there and probably about two hundred and fifty residents that came out of that building.
Actually, Tim, that was the night I was speaking about.
Yeah, it was.
I was, no, I was speaking about the night they lit the things on fire.
The fire on fire?
Oh, like.
They, remember the idea, an advertisement, so we lit on fire, I'll speak of that night. The four A M one, I wasn't out there.
Okay, well, is there something else that I want to talk about instead of having a conversation?
I just wanna echo to what, what was said about the campus police's response time, is we've had emergencies in the media center where we have, you know, there was the terrorist attack two years ago where that kid came in with a fire extinguisher and charged into the radio station, pulled all the fire alarms and the guy was a psycho, but, uh, threatened a bunch of people. Campus police didn't show up for fifteen minutes. Like, the fire alarm was pulled and we called campus police and said, some crazy guy just came in here, pulled the fire alarm, charged into the radio station with a fire extinguisher, like, the guy was nuts. Um, and they didn't show up for fifteen minutes, and when they did show up, our radio station personnel were pointing at the guy that did it and they were like, huh, 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 and they just, they didn't even care. So, and, and people were really, really angry about that, and there's been other situations too where, you know, either it's been an alarm or it's been a serious, you know, you know, s- serious problem or medical concern where campus police's response time has not been two minutes, has not been five minutes. Uh, it's, it's one thing when you call and get a room unlocked and it takes them twenty minutes to get there, that's fine. But when there's an actual emergency, when you tell the dispatcher, when you tell the lieutenant on, on the desk, we have an emergency and they take ten minutes to get there, that's ridiculous, it should never happen.
And I, I'm assuming, I'm, I, I have three RAs and one hall director in the room. Do, does everybody agree with that sentiment that it takes too long?
Yeah, especially because they.
From mo- like, ninety percent of the time it's too long?
They advertise saying like, call us, we have a two-minute percent, two-minute response time and they have never been to one of my incidents in under five minutes, not once.
Okay, alright.
I can't really echo the same sentiment just because I've only worked here for a couple of months, so, uh, the things I've had to respond to, it's never been, I've never had to wait that long, but I've only worked here for a few months.
Okay.
If you dial nine-one-one, they take every call as seriously as the next.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's gotta be the same way campus police, unless it's something small like opening a door or my car just got dinged, okay, that's different. But if somebody calls and says, I have an emergency, they need to take that seriously every time and they don't, they definitely place in the pile.
Okay, um.
Cause they do get a lot of calls, I understand that.
Okay.
And, and most of my, don't, when they get there, don't turn out to be emergencies, but they, they, they have to stop, get out of mindset.
They need to treat them like emergencies?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and you've, everybody feels that has ha- dealt with campus police?
Mm-hmm.
That they don't treat those situations as emergencies, they take them as they come? Okay, um, so, we're forty-five minutes in. Anything else we'd like to talk about today? Okay, Laura, go ahead, I know you by name now, so just give me that.
Um, I just wanna talk about like, okay, so for probably about the first month of school, there was a broken jar of salsa, I don't know if anyone else remembers this? No, seriously, a broken jar of salsa sitting out there for a month and a half. I'm talking glass rotten salsa, like, there's a thing out there right now that's filled with disgusting broccoli and cheddar soup from dawn like last Thursday and it never gets cleaned up, ever. Like, that sat out there for like a month and a half, the salsa, and it was bringing, it's broken glass, like on the ground and nothing is ever done about it and I just see it all the time and it's always around like here and it's gross and it's not safe.
So you feel, you're concerned about cleanliness of the grounds as well, because of the glass?
I mean, it's just, it's just funny because like they're so concerned about like cleanliness and health within the suite, but if there's broken glass and salsa sitting out there, then it's not a big deal.
Okay.
You know, was it on the walkway or like on the side?
It was on the walkway, it was like on the road.
I agree with that because there's been many of times where like, there's broken glass alcohol bottles.
Bottles everywhere.
Um, there in my car and I'm gonna have to back up and if I get a flat, I'm the one that's gonna have to pay for it to get it fixed and get new tires, but there's no, no one trying to pick up the bottles that somebody's got.
Um, I can, I can somewhat comment on the, um, the trash in the back lot. Obviously, it's a big issue that we've been experiencing now for the, for many couple of years now in terms of RSA and res life. Um, and the things that we've been told is that, and it, it does somewhat make sense, is that it's very hard to clean the entire back of L lot only because there's always usually cars back there, whether it's over the weekend or something like that. Um, so, we have expressed that concern and we did that last year. And during times where residents are required to leave campus, so example, during winter break, they'll be, they, they should be doing a clean sweep of the entire place. Um, now, if there's, if it's particularly bad or anything like that, um, we've been instructed, you can tell either an RA or you can go to RSA and express that and then we can forward it through the proper channels to get that taken care of. Um, but in terms of excessive trash back there, yeah, it's a big problem, but we don't necessarily, the college I don't think has the means to take care of that all.
How often is, how often does it get cleaned?
I would assume during all of the summer, it's clean, obviously, because no one's back there. Um.
Except for the few residents that live.
Yeah, um, and then the next time they probably touch it is probably going to be winter break. Granted, I mean, granted that we, I know Greg does have like crews that go around, but there's nothing like a good sweep, like a, a street cleaner and obviously I don't think they take care of that until winter break, but again, I can't really speak on that.
I think they can tell us to all kind, like, I feel like during wintertime, we, Brown, um, Brian Lowly sends an email, all of us have to move our cars so they can plow. If they can send us an email to plow, maybe every couple of days when there's a storm, they can send us an email maybe once a month or once every couple of months for them to.
On a Saturday or Sunday.
On a Saturday or Sunday, just to sweep it off.
And this place is dead on Saturdays and Sundays, there's no, there's barely any cars.
And if you choose not to move your car, you've gotten an email, then it's not like, you know?
Okay, question for the RAs and hall director. Uh, would students who live here on a Saturday find that inconvenient?
Yeah, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they would.
Wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't.
They would move their cars.
The only reason why they're gonna move the, the snow is because they don't wanna get snowed in, so they're gonna move it.
Okay. When do you, is there a time that you feel would be convenient or would resident students not do it at all?
I feel at any point, they do it during the breaks because absolutely nobody's here.
Okay.
Uh, I, yeah, I feel, even if you did it on a Saturday or Sunday or even like a long weekend when like even more people go home, there's always gonna be those people who either don't get the email because they don't check it in time or something like that, so.
Those people often love. Um, alright, I, so there's really not a more convenient time to do it other than breaks? What resident students would like to see done more frequently, at least minimal cleaning done more frequently?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, because the thing is, there, there's like boxes and stuff back there that can easily be picked up by campus crew, so.
Cause it's only. Exactly.
I mean, I know personally, I threw off the coffee back there and just threw a coaster to the one it gave, it was like, you know what, you're down?
Like, I understand, it's the glass that bothers me.
It's the glass, like.
Okay.
Because I don't wanna spend, I have an S U D and a tire for an S U D is gonna be more than a tire for a car because I need the durability.
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna spend that a hundred and fifty bucks for a tire for somebody who.
And it's not just in the parking lot, it's there.
But if I go and pick up that empty bottle of alcohol, I'm gonna get in trouble in the end, so it's like,
Yeah, exactly.
Who's gonna be, who's gonna be last to get the money?
I'm also a fellow flip-flop wearer and that's also dangerous when you're wearing flip-flops, so, I understand, I respect that, power to people. Um, go ahead, Rob.
I have a question, now, do you think if they did like one weekend where everybody parked across from suite and not park in law? So they get sweet that, that would be accepted, because I know a lot of people would prefer to park over there.
Like, have a regular schedule, like first weekend of the month, this is the month, this, this is the very long week, it's gonna be.
Yeah, every, everybody park.
I just, I, I, I know I wouldn't do that, and the thing is, I don't think we should set a precedence where it's okay to park over there. I every, like, because the thing is, be like, oh, we parked there last Saturday, why'd I get a ticket today, like, you know what I mean?
No, whatever you did one day a month, then everybody parked there.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that residents be like, well, we parked there last Saturday, like, I didn't see what the issue was then.
But if there's flyers and the RAs announce, then they're gonna just think, okay, so it's okay that weekend, why, what's the difference?
What's the difference this weekend?
Why can't you just clean it every weekend so every Saturday and park there?
Really, back lot sections.
Well, that could be an idea too.
Oh. I, I mean, I don't agree with having, it necessarily mean that having to have a duty clean every weekend.
Oh, because there's not that many concerts or anything.
That's what I was thinking too.
No.
I think that there does need to be more light cleaning, that way the heavy duty cleaning needs to be done less often. Um, it's something that we can talk to physical plant about, I don't, I don't perceive it being an issue to get more light cleaning done on a regular basis, because I agree, I honestly, I will, I drove back here and there, like, two-thirds of that lot is empty. They could clean that part of the lot on any Saturday or Sunday, which granted they have regular employees.
And that two-thirds is usually where the glass is, right?
Yeah.
It's not right for the building, it's.
It's always in the back because it's the farthest away.
Is everywhere.
Yeah.
And like I said, if I could, I would pick up a bottle, but I'm gonna get caught by an RA of my luck or some security or a hall director, why is there a bottle of alcohol in your hand? Because it's in back of my car and I don't wanna run over it.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand, but I think that we all agree though that if there was more regular cleaning, that this wouldn't be an issue, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah? So, we'll have to check and see what we can do about that. Alright, you look like you have another concern?
No, I just, I don't know, it's just like funny to me that like, I don't know, I just find it weird that like, they're allowed to like clean, you know what I mean, like all the lots and stuff, but when it comes to like, I keep bringing up the trash, but it just bothers me so much. That it's such an issue for, you know, for somebody to come in and take the trash out.
Mm-hmm.
But, no, yeah, that thing of salsa was sitting up there for like a month, it's gross.
You could joke around about it, but I'm gonna take our friends out there.
Seriously. So gross.
That's fun, sounds like a good guy to me. Alright, um, any other concerns by anybody else? Open up the floor to everyone. Alright, what do you guys think about the meal plans this year? Just gonna ask.
They're better.
Better?
They're never gonna, they're never gonna be perfect, that's the thing, so.
They should be a little bit, though.
What do you think about the on-the-go heated options?
Better.
Better, yes?
I have a question.
Yeah?
How come in the salad bar, if you're a vegetarian, why is the vegetarian stuff right next to all the stuff that has meat in it?
Really impressive.
And they fall into each other and, I mean, if you're a vegetarian or a vegan, you can't eat the, that's done, it's like, we have to.
I've thrown it at you many a times, because they actually, um, fry their fries in the same batter as they do their chicken patties.
It's, yeah, that's a, I've worked in a pizza parlor before and it's, it's very hard, you know, process to change the oil.
They could get another one.
Yes, they could, I agree with that, but changing, like changing the oil, it, it's a bit half hour just to change oil back and forth.
But, so, but people agree that the on-the-go stuff is better this year than it was last year?
Yeah.
Cause I know when I used to get it, there was compensation on everything.
Yeah.
Um, something that was brought up last year was academics and being a resident student and how you feel it affects your academics. Do you guys, is that, is that a major concern for the residents here in this room?
That is a type of it.
But it will be?
Yeah, advisor was still an issue, I feel like.
You and I can be partners on this.
Yeah.
We got a project that we can work on.
I just, I just don't understand, it's, it's very simple to look at a plan for general education and say, you need to take these classes, this is what you need to get done for years, you should be able to get it done.
What do you do in Thursday at twelve?
Thursday at twelve, I have a class. Prob- I think I have class, but.
Let me know.
Alright, um, but like.
We're having, we're having a whole. We're meeting about.
I'm, I'm, I'm just baffled, because the thing is, is like, there are students on the campus who know how the education department or how the general education works, that can be better advisors than the ones that Rick are advising. Like, I've had residents who have told me that they can't get in touch with their advisor. The classes they've showed that the advisor has advised them to take isn't the right course for them to take. When really like if, I mean, it all comes down to the student in my opinion, if you just looked at it, you can be able to figure it out yourself, but the college should be able to have advisors who can do that. And I've been lucky enough where I've had like department chair as my advisor, like that's, that's great for me. But I'm worried about the, the person who is just, like, for example, a friend of mine who's a communications major who is dealing with the department chair there is having a very difficult time with that. So, there's, there's n- there's really no consistency with how academic departments support their students.
Okay.
And a lot of my friends have just sent a email to their, um, their buddy, like, do you wanna block me, and that's all.
So.
I've, I've done that multiple times.
They've unblocked you. And then you go with your classes, whatever you wanna take.
So. On the record of academic advising, um, as far as for me, I'm working on a project to change academic advising and I'm, Kyla and I are meeting with the vice president of academic affairs, um, Dr. Ron Pitt on Thursday this week. So I can take some of those concerns to him and I know he knows all of these things, believe me, don't get me wrong, he knows all of these things. And he is not the person who directly deals with academic advising, but he's going to guide me in the right direction. Um, and I, yes?
The council committee still exists, a special committee on academic advising or?
We have academic affairs committee, or ours.
No, no, the, the council, the council, they had a special committee on academic advising, I don't know if it's still.
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't believe, still exists, I think it was when they were creating in the, the universal hold that it was still there.
I don't think they do.
Yeah.
Cause the universal hold is only about five, six years old, it's not that old. It's only been around, I think, as long as I've been a student here and that means it started two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Yeah.
Ooh.
Um, I just dated myself, anyway, um. So, in the time that it's existed, it hasn't had any changes made to it as far as I know. And the first thing that was changed most recently was the general education requirements and those are only applied to freshmen, as far as I know.
Yes.
Um, but academic advising is something that's important to me at least and I know when I was a resident student here on campus, I found, at least for me, my academics were highly affected by my community, so I'm surprised that you guys have no concerns at all.
I'm fortunate to have social work department.
True.
We, we, our advisors are our teachers and our teachers are, we're all, we have to have weekly, we meet with them weekly and talk about classes and that's why, it's not a big concern to me because I'm always meeting with my advisor on a weekly basis, talking about classes and.
Do you think that you're, like, this might be a general question, maybe the RAs have some perspective on it, but do you guys get a lot of complaints about people trying to study in their suites and there being issues or concerns? Or that, like, not having a comfortable study environment, not being able, not feeling that they're performing as well academically because they're too focused on being a college kid, I know I've done that.
Ah, not necessarily, I mean, the thing is, is like, New Hall has the study rooms, so I'm assuming New Hall wouldn't be an issue. And in regards to, in regards to the other buildings, when it comes to academic, academic failures, it's more of just the student's choice not to study, it's more of just the student's choice not to go to class, so.
Self-inflicted.
Yeah, the, the RA staff is encouraging them to go to class and we, we, you know, obviously, since we live in the building, we know kind of who's, who's going to class and we can kinda tell who's doing well. But in terms of spaces, like, people use this space right here during studies week all the time during finals week. Um, in regards to suite, like, we just, we just move furniture around so it's more conducive to study. Um, and then our student orgs here on campus, RSA and N R H H, we host like stu- stud- study groups for, during the studies week, so, it's really something that I know, I don't think I've really seen much of it, I should with.
Well, that, it, it's a question, I mean, I just wanted to ask.
I would go too, as a professional working, like that, especially in suite, because it's traditional car door style that the students don't use their rooms as their study space. Because I feel there's just too much distraction anyway with your laptop and TV and stuff like that. So it's like your room itself isn't a conducive study space, so I'm happy to see the students of suite actually using the lounge effectively, even walking. To, leaving to walk to this meeting, there was like five or six students in the me, like in the, you know, in the lounge just studying with books and laptops, so.
I was never that proactive. Um now, this is, this might be another question. Do the library hours here on campus affect where you study here on campus as a resident student? Yes?
Like, I think for that, if there's any change at like PC, because I know half the residents here will go to the PC library. Because our library is not open or it's not conducive to the time they study because especially upperclassmen, a lot of people are part, like bar vendors, we should, they have like later night jobs. So needs are over later to meet their needs to study.
I agree with you. Two of my best friends were RAs last year and I would really go with them to PC library.
I would.
I know we can.
Yeah. Um well, you're not supposed to be on it, but you can.
No, you can, you, you have access to it.
As a, as a, as a home, as a home library.
Do we?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, so go ahead.
Yeah. Wait, this college operates on a budget of hundreds of millions of dollars. How much would it really cost them to have a person year round at the desk to keep that library twenty-four seven?
You'd want twenty-four seven?
How much would it really cost them to do that?
I mean, we have the cost for the energy bills in the building. They'd have to add a new line item to their staffing, which you know always is, is a huge song and dance.
I'd say so.
And for two weeks, it's about three thousand change to.
Three thousand dollars. And it gets till like two AM.
But like I said, it's a college budget of hundreds of millions, so even fifty thousand a year, to, to, to out, reallocate the resources to do that, if the students want it, the students would use it.
So. Yeah.
It is, I mean.
Like, what are their money?
There's plenty of other things our money goes to.
I just have, I think also though that they're. I don't know how effective it would be for a school that's largely commuter to stay open later, like budget wise. Like, I think a study needs to be done too as a graduate of Rick and somebody who has a student here, worked at the library, like. Student, people aren't there late at night and, um, so I think it comes down to is it, would it be effective if only one or two people are in the library at two AM? And they have to staff it with X amount of staff people, that doesn't make it cost effective for the school to keep it open.
Because I, I, I know from student government, from the two weeks that we do around finals, obviously it gets used a lot more. Um which you can probably vouch for that a lot of people are in there like two or three weeks before finals.
Yeah.
But even extending it, maybe you know from personal experience working in the library, do you feel that at ten o'clock it's dead or do you feel it like, well, let's, nine thirty, it's dead?
Well, I didn't work there now, I was, but did as a student, but yeah, but, you know, anytime past pretty much, I felt like eight o'clock.
Well, you used to.
You know, I felt the people working at the library outnumbered the amount of people in the library.
I'll say, I think it might be a little bit different now from my, from my personal experience and knowing the people who spend a lot of time in the library?
Yeah.
All the time.
And I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I think it's.
Yeah. Something to look at.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I feel like if it was open later, you could get more people there, staying there till like eleven, twelve o'clock because they know that they're staying, I'm not gonna have to pack up all their stuff and go somewhere.
Okay.
So they just go to PC anyways, so they don't have to move it.
So you would even think opening it up until twelve would be better than giving it open till ten?
Yeah, anything would be better, even eleven, just shut it.
Okay. Even eleven, okay.
I see what you mean. People would probably be like, my mom is setting up camp if I have to get up and leave somewhere like.
Yeah, that's such a thought.
Yeah.
I, yes, I know. Alright, um, go ahead, Rob.
And maybe that if they could keep Fridays open, instead of, I believe it's four o'clock, they lock the doors and maybe, and maybe if they could keep like at five or six.
Mm-hmm. Open later on Fridays.
At least a couple of travels on Fridays.
Open later on Fridays, okay. Um now, we, I think we've covered pretty much every topic that we possibly could. Unless there's something that you guys have, or do you have anything, Kyla?
No.
I think we're all.
That's ours.
I want avocado and, no, no kidding.
Oh, you guys.
We can educate for our avocado.
Well, there's food advisory council meetings for that.
Food service advisory council.
Do we have cheddar and coffee, coffee and cheese, yeah, or like burgers and stuff?
Oh, I remember I should.
There's, I think pepper jack cheese.
What's? They have pepper jack?
I think so.
They have pepper jack, it's amazing, I don't think they do. They have like Munster and Rapping Pro.
Tim, yes, Tim.
Could, um, could you talk to Donovan to maybe schedule food advisory committee other than Thursday at twelve thirty?
Yeah, we can.
Because it doesn't make any sense.
Are you talking to Gianna?
Okay, thank you.
She's the one who's scheduled the book though. Anyway. Food service advisory committees, SDEC. They are on Thursdays, usually from twelve thirty to two or twelve to two. Um, the first one that they ever had was a really big hit and a lot of people went and complained and a lot of things were changed. Uh that's, I think when on the go started, um a lot of the, that's when it went from Coke to Pepsi.
Wow.
I don't know. Um, there were a couple of other things that were brought up. I don't know the specifics, please don't, I, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
So I agree.
But I think a lot of them were, um, hours, when food is available, um, why things are budgeted, the way they are for meals. Um, because I know I've had a student complain to me about why breakfast is so little and lunch is more and dinner is more. They want it distributed differently and I asked why and they were like, well, because if you break it down by this, this and this, all these items cost this much. And if you wanted a well rounded breakfast, this is what it is. I'm just like, okay, that makes no sense to me, but I'll take it. Um, so.
Rob, those words.
There were, but there were, at that meeting, there were a lot of changes made or there were at least a lot of opinions made. Um, they started using green products, they opened, there were a lot of soups and everything, a lot of those things changed. Go ahead.
He just crossed them. Um, online, the hours for, the specific hours for the meals are different than what they practice inside. For instance, today, I looked online to see what time lunch went to. Online it states on Sunday till three thirty. So it was just at the three, I rush over there, I just wanna grab some drinks, a thing I'll eat later for dinner. So the lady says, no, we're on dinner already. Because they get a little sign with little print that says inside next catcher's, three o'clock to six o'clock, which makes sense. But they should at least have it online. For people like me, when you're in a rush and you don't remember, you look online real fast. They should at least have it online appropriate.
That's just updating the website, so it shouldn't be an issue. Go ahead.
Why, I, I work on Saturdays and Sundays, I work my, I work, I work fourteen hour shift and it's like, I, I started at nine, it's like, why are they only open at nine AM on Saturdays and Sundays? Why can't it be like at eight? So it's like, I'm going into work with, I can't grab food for the day because I have to be at work for nine AM.
Open earlier, okay. Do you, is the six o'clock evening time a good cutoff? No.
I'm here till, I work till eleven.
I, I think it's a bad idea for Sundays.
We suffer at five o'clock.
Absolutely not.
I think it's a bad idea on Sundays in my opinion at least, because more residents are here on campus.
No, I don't.
I know, yeah, I know.
No, like I'm sorry, but like if there are classes that are going until ten o'clock at night, then the, then there should be food available when people are getting out of classes. I'm sorry, but like, like I'm not like, just to have like dinner from like, what is it, three thirty till seven thirty, like seven thirty is ridiculous. This, I'm sorry, but this is a college campus. Like people are up until four o'clock in the morning, like.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the reason why the cafe, that is actually the reason why the cafe is open now till midnight, but you can only have so much pizza every night, like every night if you're at class.
Not only that, like three dollars for a slice of pizza?
Not in the morning.
Not only getting.
Three dollars for a slice of pizza, that's ridiculous.
Back in my day, it was two dollars. And what if you run out of bonus points and they should be able to accept board at the other cafe as well?
Exactly.
Okay.
If you don't use a dinner board there.
I think they do, they accept board at.
They use, they only accept it at the.
You get like what, two hundred and fifty from the campus point?
We got a hundred and twenty five.
Do you have like your hundred and twenty five?
It depends on your meal plan.
I have a two, I got, I start off with two hundred and fifty.
Okay, where are you now? Do you know? By chance?
I have none. Well, I, I have like maybe like seventy-five because I have to go.
Right?
I get out of work at eleven PM at, on Saturdays, Saturdays and Sundays, after being work at nine AM. I'm hungry, I have to go to the cafe to get food.
What time does the cafe open on weekends? Because I know they serve, they serve.
They're, I don't think they're open at all on Saturday.
They close at ten thirty.
Saturdays are open.
I think they're open four to ten thirty.
What time is four to ten thirty on Saturdays?
I don't know why that's.
On Saturdays and Sundays, it closes at ten thirty, but it's open till twelve thirty every other weekday.
See. Okay.
Pepper jack, Colby jack, or cheddar jack, one of those free jacks, you're being done.
You just like Jack.[1773.72]